While this meeting is in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Fies.
Here.
Mrs. Fies.
Here.
Mr. Grisback.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janasek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Mojek.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All nine members present.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from the disciplinary committee.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Turner. We have, Mr. Mensch is going to get us started on this and let him introduce the findings from the discipline committee and then we'll turn it over to our teacher who's going to present.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Good evening, everyone. We convened a discipline committee back in the 1920s school year. I think Mrs. Kestner can remind me if I'm wrong on this, but I think it was like the day before COVID happened, we had one of our last meetings at that time where we had drawn to a conclusion, for the most part, the dress code that was being reviewed, but we had other items that still needed to be reviewed for the discipline code. And so Mrs. Kestner and I and some other teachers and administrators served on that committee. Certainly want Mrs. Kestner to give more of the details, but we surveyed the community about the dress code at that time and also some of the other items such as SOTDs and how we were handling those. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Kestner to come up and talk about the findings of that.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Kestner. Can I make sure that microphone's not on?
Yeah, that's a model.
So you gotta make sure it's on because I'm very top. Is it better?
There you go.
Okay. So I teach fifth grade at Yale. Been there, I think this is my 25th or 26th year. I'm sort of losing count. We started in 2020 and right before COVID, we had finished the SOTDs.
This is a better mic, sorry.
Okay. Make me hold it. Yeah, okay. So we had finished the SOTDs and we had finished the discipline, the dress code portion of the code. As Mr. Mensch said, we had put out a survey for community members, staff, and students. We reviewed those before we made any changes and I don't know if any of the board has seen, I don't, the previous board had seen any of those survey results, but I do have results. If you want me to leave them with you, I can, just to review. But overwhelmingly, most people were just happy with what we had. Of course, there were some outliers that felt that it was not strict enough. There were also outliers that felt it was way too strict. So we sort of stayed with the basics. One of the things that overwhelmingly was stated from parents was that the fingertip rule with the jeans was impossible to abide by, that it just, maybe at some of the higher levels, because, you know, for larger, or I shouldn't say larger, more adult children, you can find longer pants. But for younger girls in the elementary, it just isn't possible to find, you know, Bermuda-length shorts. So we understand that. And we did change the inseam length. And this isn't to say that principals are going to go around measuring inseams, because that's not really what they have time for. But just that, I mean, we, we made it so that it's easier for children to, you know, follow the rule, but also that, you know, we just wanted to be that, basically, the way we wrote it, private parts are not showing, you know? I mean, that's the biggest thing, that where the holes are in the pants, we're not showing undergarments. When they're bending over, private parts are not showing. And that's basically the change. And this was already adopted this year and in the handbooks. I know there was some concern from parents that it was still too strict, but we feel and the committee felt that it was, you know, okay. Moving forward, the SOTDs, and I think you're going to look at that again tonight. You're voting on that policy tonight, Dr. Walsh told me. Everything with that, we just made some small changes to that, basically just some language changes that were in there, things like, you know, a Walkman, that nobody knows what that is anymore, these kids, things to that nature.
Just to clarify, SOTDs is actually student-owned technology devices.
Yes, ours, yeah. So we made some changes to that. And there was one question we had on that at our last meeting, and I don't know, the students, it says in that policy that they're not allowed to use it on school property, but they do use it at some of the buildings on school property for entertainment purposes, I should say. And the bus is school property. So some levels, like at an elementary level, they don't want them using them on the bus for entertainment purposes. And of course, it has to be school-appropriate, you know, entertainment purposes. But, so at the elementary level, it's an issue, but at all the other levels, they're allowed to use it on the bus. So that might be something when you're looking at that, that we can tweak that language a little bit. And you may have to decide whether you want the elementary to be able to use them on the bus or not. All the other levels do use them, but it currently states that the elementary, I think it says that none of them can, but we allow them to do it, if that makes any sense. Okay. Some things moving forward, we are asking that we, we did not finish, we've only had, do we have one or two meetings this year? Just two, okay. We had two meetings this year. We would like to reconvene and talk more about some of the other discipline that's in there. And if you looked, I had Dr. Jay send you the review of what we had already discussed and what we want to look at moving forward. The philosophy behind the discipline code obviously has changed. There's a big difference now with COVID, mental health issues, just even the sexual orientation of children. Things are changing. And the language, the philosophy of the discipline code is very old. I think it was written, I don't even know, it's been so long since it was written, I'd have to say at least 15 years ago. So things need to be updated within there. We need to talk about making up missed work. As it states right now, they have three days, or as many days as they were out to make up missed work. But with this quarantining, like some kids are sitting at home, they're not sick, they're quarantining, but if they're out, I mean, now it's five days, but previously it was 10. But if they're out for 10 days, then they had 10 days to make up the work, but they weren't sick. So some of these kids are falling behind quickly. And then they have to quarantine again. I mean, I have students that have already quarantined this nine weeks, you know, twice. And then they just start missing the work, even though we can post it, they're not, they're not necessarily doing it. The high school, Mr. Vialani felt that we need some discussion about the drug policy and things being restorative as well as punitive in nature all the time. And thinking of ways that students, you know, serving their detentions, serving their Saturdays, and having it be a different system, like maybe, you know, missing dances, things like that, as opposed to just, because a lot of them just don't serve their detentions and their Saturdays. Another issue that has arose out of COVID is just the use of water bottles. A lot of the kids use those, you know, heavy water bottles at the elementary level. I mean, we can assume there's water in there, maybe some juice, but at the high school, we don't really know what's in there. Do we, you know, I mean, at my level, I'm an intermediate level, I can assume that it's also water. But do we know, you know, at the high school level, do we want to specify that they have to be clear water bottles, things like that? Because right now, there, there's no water fountain anymore. So the kids are going to have a water bottle probably from this point on. And it doesn't look like we're going to go back to water fountains. So that's something that might need to be addressed. But anyway, these are just things that, as a committee, we really felt like we needed to go back to and look at. So we are asking that we would reconvene at least this year and that once that it's completed, that this be a process of meeting every other year, because the, everything changes so quickly now. And it's something that, instead of a 15, 20-year process, it needs to be done by yearly. Do you guys have questions for me? Nope.
So just thank you very much. And just to confirm again, the board will have another public reading of the policy that she referenced, the student device policy. And the board already approved the changes to the dress code in time for the start of this school year. So we'll see that the committee continue to meet moving forward and what else they need to work on. Those will obviously come before the board, either as policy change or handbook changes. Thank you again.
Thank you. Do we need to do anything to get this, keep this committee rolling, or is that?
No, it's.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt agenda items for business.
So move.
Second.
Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Mrs. Fies.
Um, yes. There's nothing, I don't have anything here.
Yeah. Vote voting yes?
Yeah, it's fine. Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion for the approval of minutes of December 7, 2021, reorganization meeting and a regular meeting on December 14, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McGregor. I need a second.
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 Second by Mr. Scalzo. Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Mrs. Fies.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Announcements of executive session on January 18, 2022, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and on January 25, 2022, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Next is the student government report, the PTO, PCA, and the solicitors' report. Do we have anyone here from student government?
Hi, yes, that's me. Kristy Tonchan says hello.
Okay, Kristy.
I'm the PTO president at William Penn this year, and I'm reading the council school board reports from all of the schools. Okay, so first I have Abraham Lincoln Elementary. Lincoln students celebrated the holidays in December with a week of spirit-themed activities like PJ Day and Grinch Day. Volunteers made party bags full of crafts, treats, and games on the final day of school before break. A bowling party at Legacy Lanes was supposed to be held on MLK Day. However, Mother Nature had other plans. It is rescheduled for March 25, the next records day. Wednesday, January 19, they had a spirit day at Chick-fil-A. 15% of sales went to their PTO. Unfortunately, they will not be able to hold their talent show in February. They are hoping next year they will be able to see students shine on the stage again. The week of January 24, Abraham Lincoln Elementary will be holding coins for Cory. Cory Fisher is a Lincoln student, I'm sorry, a Lincoln alum, and was diagnosed with cancer. All week, classes will donate their coins, all of which will be given to Cory and his family. The class who raises the most will be treated to a pizza party. The Easter Sarah's Candy fundraiser is in full swing. They continue using Box Top apps, Amazon Smile, and Market Day for fundraising. Their spirit wear sale runs the entire school year as well. And Benjamin Franklin Elementary has had a busy few months. They had a successful spirit night at Permanente's and BJ's. They are well underway with planning for Parents Night Out, scheduled for February. Their first fundraiser with Pittsburgh Popcorn just ended. Over the holiday, they were able to provide each student with a custom BP beanie and gave the teachers a nice welcome-back breakfast from Bruegger's Bagels. Looking forward, they are beginning preparations for their fourth grade events, spring candy sale, and other end-of-the-year festivities. They are hard at work on their yearbook. George Washington Elementary, George Washington has a pepperoni roll sale this month. They also have several themed dress-up days for the yearbook. Their Sarah's sale wrapped up at the end of December and was very successful. And William Penn, this is the school that I am currently the PTO president for, we had an outdoors Cookies of Santa event that had to be canceled due to the windstorm that affected our area on December 10. As an alternative, we were able to host an indoor, during school hours, one-day-only Santa shop. We had collected, donated new with tags items for the past two-plus years. And so this was the first year that we ran the Santa shop as a fundraiser, and we ended up making $1,300. We also had a Santa visit for the last day of school before break, and the PTO provided a small gift for each student. We were also really lucky and had a beautiful meal donated to our staff for the last day before Christmas break. PTO purchased gift cards to raffle off for teachers and staff on that day as well. We wrapped up a fundraiser with Five Below and Red Robin as well. We're looking forward to the 100th day of school. PTO William Penn gives out $5 gift cards every 100 minutes to two children in each classroom. The kids get really excited, excuse me, and hear their name on the loudspeaker if they win. We're also doing the 100-day t-shirts, where the kids decorate their shirts with 100 items. For Valentine's Day, the class parties will be the same as they were for Halloween. No volunteers in the building, teachers run the parties, classroom coordinators can send in any craft or snacks, and I'm sorry, PTO will provide the snacks. We're looking forward to Read Across America Week, Read-a-thon, Dr. Seuss, and we typically partner with the Washington Wild Things to give participants free tickets. We just started planning our annual science fair. We're really excited. This year, we're combining it with our ice cream social. It will take place indoors and outdoors at the school. We are going to stagger the times and keep people moving from station to station to prevent any large crowd gatherings. Families will walk quickly through the art displays and the science experiments. Then they will go outside, where they will be served ice cream outdoors, and watch a live assembly from Mad Science. This event is due to take place on April 13. Our PTO was finally able to purchase an assembly field trip this year. We had Jeff the Geode Guy came to visit our third graders at Penn, and they were very thankful and excited. Our library is making a large purchase, updating our books. We're excited to do that and have the funds to do that. Just this week, we launched our Pittsburgh Pierogi Truck fundraiser, and we do really well with that sale. If you're looking for Pittsburgh pierogies, find a William Penn family, we'll be happy to help you with that. So lots of great things at William Penn. This is Neil Armstrong Middle School. The updates to NAMM's Bylaw was voted on at the January meeting were approved. School Store and Popcorn Fridays continue to be popular and great fundraisers. They just completed a fundraiser for Carol's Dips and made more than $600 in profit. They have a Mose fundraiser planned for January, I'm sorry, February. And they had a trivia night on January 21 with 16 families participating. The annual Battle of the Books has been scheduled for February 25 and has 28 teams participating. They have additional plans for spring programming, including bookwear, spiritwear, and others to be announced. And they want to thank all Bethel Park families, especially the parent volunteers who continue to support the programming put in place by the PTO. And lastly, I have Independence Middle School. It has been a quiet month for the PTSO at IMS. They will begin to help fund Bold and Gold later this month and early February. That is all. Thank you from the PTO's of our Bethel Park schools.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody from student government tonight.
Yeah, me either. Sorry.
Okay, just making sure that I'm not missing anyone. Next up, Solicitor Report. Do you have anything tonight?
No report this one, thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Next up is Committee Reports. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Walsh?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to start with just an opportunity to honor an employee whose retirement is on the agenda for tonight. The board will be accepting, assumedly, accepting the retirement notice of Patricia Luptak. Patty was hired in April of 2017 as a part-time health services nurse for the district, and we assigned her at William Penn Elementary School. She was there for a year, and in 2018, she was made full-time and a full-time certified school nurse at IMS, NAMMs, and William Penn. And she's still in this position and will retire, intended to retire, in June of 2022. I want to thank Patty for her service to our students and staff. She's a delight. We already heard tonight from the discipline committee, but we also have some presentations for the board. Mr. Cromie will talk about five big things. And after Mr. Cromie, we have our curriculum coordinator's update for the month.
Okay, guys. For the five big things this month, absolutely the most prominent thing we did, not necessarily the biggest thing, but the most, what's that?
To move it forward.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The most prominent thing we did was, we got a lot of coverage for, was the football team shoveled the sidewalks. That was the result of a tweet sent out by Coach Delalo imploring his team canceling the Monday workout and asking his team to instead shovel the sidewalks of their elderly or disabled neighbors. And his boys responded by shoveling more than 100 community driveways and walkways. And it was a very nice gesture, and it has just caught fire, really with, with so many different news outlets and so many members of our community. We've received countless messages from people from all over the country who have nothing to do with Bethel Park, as well as some of our alumni. We had a gentleman in Chicago who says he lives in a skyrise. He's a 1967 Bethel Park alum, and he wanted to buy the team a round of hot chocolates. So it's, it's really touched a nerve that we're really proud of. And having the opportunity to go out and on some of these walkway shovelings with some of the kids and getting to know them, it's a, it's an especially nice group of kids, and it really truly couldn't happen. Anyone who knows Brian Delalo knows what a good man he is. And anyone who would get to know these young men would know what good boys they are. And so we're very, we're just very proud. And so the media that it's shown up in is really pretty much everything. It culminated last Friday with the appearance on Fox and Friends. They've also appeared in the Washington Post. They've appeared in all the major local papers. They were on the Today Show website. They were on the CBS Evening News, the CBS Morning News. It's truly become a worldwide thing. And we've even had different organizations from overseas reach out, that they were that touched by it. So it's something we're very proud of, and I, I think it shows very well just kind of what Bethel Park's all about. So very excited about that. Also, equally excited about our teacher, Nina Percy. She had an article called Metallic Impressions, and it appears in the February edition of School Arts Magazine. It's a national arts periodical written by art educators and for art educators. And also four Bethel Park students were featured in that article. And so again, we're just very excited to kind of show off some of the good work that are happening in our classrooms. To commemorate Martin Luther King Day, the Stand Club at Neil Armstrong Middle School constructed a bulletin board to honor Dr. King's legendary "I Have a Dream" speech, which was given at the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom on August 28, 1963. The Stand Club gives, they do a monthly bulletin board, and they've done a number of different things, and it's something they're very, very proud of. And it was really cool meeting with them, because they're very articulate and very passionate young men and women. I also wanted to take this moment to thank Mr. Mensch for his wonderful work at IMS and to welcome Mrs. Raquel Sutton, the new principal at IMS. She started this week, and it was a really exciting way to start it. If you have an opportunity to look at our social media, VP TV was there, and they actually recorded a good part of her first day. They did a 10- or 12-minute video kind of on the process. And Mrs. Sutton, I think, has fit in very well, and she told me she is very excited to be at Bethel Park, more excited now even than before she began. And finally, our fifth big thing is, this is a really interesting one. Jeff Schilling, who's an English teacher at IMS also, 22 years ago, he began doing what he calls Back to the Future Letters. And that is, students in seventh grade write letters to themselves as seniors, and those letters are then mailed to them the week that they graduate. And it's just interesting to kind of see kind of where they were, kind of in a headspace five years earlier. And Mrs. Kathy Hitt was really the person who helped him mail all of those letters. Well, she retired last week, and so Mr. Schilling brought her some flowers, and he just wanted to thank her for all of her hard work, because there have been thousands and thousands of letters mailed over the years. And Mrs. Hitt, including the all-time record is a 60, a young lady wrote a 68-page letter to herself, which is amazing. Had like an arc and everything else. But, but, no, but it was, but pretty exciting stuff. So it's a really neat idea. And anyone who knows Mr. Schilling knows that he's an especially dedicated teacher, and we're very excited for that. So those are our five big things. And of course, there's always many, many more things going. It's always tough to narrow it down to five, but those are five really cool things happening at Bethel Park right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Figlioli and Mrs. Wells, who are going to talk about the updates from the curriculum.
Ms. Wells is going to go first. She is remote, coming in remote.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. This evening, we are going to talk about two big items in the curriculum department. The first one is the MAP Growth Assessment. Anthony, you can go ahead and forward the slide, slide, please. The MAP Growth Assessment is new this year, and this is an assessment being given in K through 8 in ELA and mathematics. And so some of the frequent questions we get, what is MAP Growth and what does it measure? The MAP Growth is a computer adaptive test. This means that students get questions tailored to their answers of previous questions. So as they answer questions correctly, some of the questions get harder, and as they answer questions incorrectly, the questions get easier. And the goal is that students have answered about 50% of the questions correctly, so that the system can then generate what is known as a RIT score, which is what students are ready to be instructed upon. And so if this is helpful, and that it gives teachers information about students' ability levels and their ready-to-instruct levels in mathematics and in reading. Anthony, can you go ahead and slide? Thank you. How do schools and teachers use the MAP Growth? And so NWEA provides many different reports to help schools and teachers use MAP Growth information. Teachers can see the progress of individual students. They can see the progress of their class as a whole. And MAP also includes a growth aspect, not just an achievement aspect, but it sets goals for students to grow based on national norms and what a student but it sets goals for students to grow based on national norms and what a student that, a like student, who starts at a certain place with a certain number of weeks of instruction, would typically grow. So it sets goals and lets you know if your students are growing at that same projected rate. And we will talk more about setting goals with students. That's a Year Two goal for Bethel Park. That is not something we are talking about right now, as this is our inaugural year for MAP Growth. Anthony, go ahead. Thank you. So what have we done so far? We have made sure that we established some regional partnerships. We hosted a Bethel Park Regional Meeting in September and are set to host another in February, and this included neighboring districts as well as districts up to two hours away from the Pittsburgh area. We meet with West Jefferson Hills and other local districts, and we hosted them. They came in and spoke to our administrative team in order to build capacity and to be our collaborative partners, as they are about four years ahead of us in their MAP usage. So they are helping us with some best practices and ways that they utilize MAP to help their students grow. Preparing for the mid-year assessments, so we are currently in the mid-year assessments. The window opened up on January 5, and it is slated to close tomorrow, and... Mid-year data, we had a meeting on January 20, where we had a professional development session with all K-8 teachers via a Schoology course that we created in order to increase exposure to the various reports, so that all teaching staff can see the types of data that are available to them. And currently, staff is holding data meetings to work on adjusting their interventions and classroom groupings based on the mid-year scores. Our goal for the rest of the year around MAP is to increase the core team in order to include teachers from each of the buildings. And we are also going to offer some family training. Anthony, can you advance to the next slide, please? The next slide shows the family resource. There will be a link to these items when we post this on our webpage. The families can click, and NWEA has a toolkit for families to look at, and we will be sharing the results from this midterm testing in mid-February, once we close the window. And we will be offering a virtual session for reading and understanding student results and what student scores mean. Looking ahead, we also look forward to sharing an outcomes report with the Board regarding last year's scores, once we have received all of the applicable data from the state. Thank you, Mrs. Figlioli.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to share a collaborative and creative initiative that I've been a part of with the elementary librarians. Following DOT Day, which was, which occurred during the first week that I was here, we read a story by Peter Reynolds called "The Dot," and we really had a great response from the teachers. K-4 effort, everybody celebrating creativity, wanting to be a part of that. Following that event, Kathy Johnson, who is the librarian at Bethel, at Memorial Elementary, reached out to me, and she really wanted to kind of build off of that momentum and offer K-4 experiences for all the students in the elementary centers. And I was really grateful to have this opportunity to work with the librarians. They've been absolutely wonderful. They spent the day together during the November in-service and selected books that they wanted to feature during each month, and also partnered them with a design challenge. So this would level the playing field for all the kids. All of the students K-4 would have a similar experience, be exposed to those skills and dispositions that are needed for design challenges. And we decided to put together a Google site so that parents could also see a part of what was going on. So in that Google site, you can find each month what book they're using. Some months, they're using the same book for everyone and the same challenge for everyone. Some months, they are using a different book for the elementary, like the primary students, and a different book for the older students. And then we're also sharing pictures of those. There are so many great pictures. If you have an opportunity to look, they're sending me hundreds of pictures, and the students enjoy seeing themselves as well. So we've really enjoyed seeing the pictures of the students in action. And we've also been trying to include some bonus resources for parents. So parents that want to then extend that learning into home, we're offering, it could be a short video, it can be experiments that they can do at home. And what I'm really excited about is that everybody gets this experience, a consistent experience for all the students, and the librarians have done a great job of really balancing materials that are low-tech in the design challenges, and also, moving forward, the students will be using some robotics. So excited that they're getting a variety of experience, and it's really been a lot of fun for everybody involved.
Oh. We were just hanging on every word, man, David.
The end.
The end. Thank you. And thanks to both of them for putting this together to keep the Board apprised on the progress that we've been making with our strategic plan and our intentions to be best-in-class. You saw some two great issues that, two great things that are happening that are going to get us there. The other thing I have on my part of the agenda is to share a document with the Board. You have a printed copy at your seats tonight. This is a first draft of our balance scorecard. Let me back up and remind the Board, at the November meeting, the Board adopted a new strategic plan for five years. And at that point, we said pretty affirmatively that our success with it hinges on our ability to track progress and be very intentional about our decisions and our materials and our committees and our staffing and so on and so on. And the only way we really feel that this is best succeed with this plan is to have a very public-facing report card or a scorecard with the goals. And so you have a version of it that we're getting closer and closer to being completed and getting ready to put out there. The version you have covers, is organized by goal, and each goal and the action steps associated with the goal are listed there. And in very simplest terms, we've kind of color-coded the progress we're making with the goals. Something that is red has had no progress, something that's orange is in progress, something that's green is completed or near completion. And really, the piece that's, the most important piece would be this, sort of the benchmark scores that we intend to impact. In other words, we say we're going to improve achievement by doing a variety of different things academically and instructionally. The scorecard then will sort of show the change to achievement as a result of those efforts over the five years of the strategic plan. And in the boxes with the Year One, Year Two, Year Three, we'll be able to populate those with the progress or the change in scores. Two areas that are still under development, we don't have scores yet. A lot of it relates to the student experience and the DEI committee's work. We're still developing a student satisfaction and connectedness, respect, and value survey. We used one back in the fall, pardon me, back in the spring, to kind of get the committee's work moving, but we want to refine that to incorporate a lot, a very focused set of questions and things that will help feed this scorecard with our progress there. And the other piece is some instructional measurement tools. We're working with the principals on a walkthrough tool that will gather data about instructional design and student engagement. Those two places still have, yet to have data sets that we're still developing, but they will end up in this scorecard as well. I think my, sort of my final vision would be that those top bars, those goals and achievement levels will be public-facing, and then the action plans themselves will be more a working document for administration and the Board to keep up with the progress that's being made on each of the action items that were intended with the strategic plan. I think it's important to say at this point in time that the plan is ambitious. It's every bit of 17 very ambitious goals that'll take five or more years to accomplish. So sort of an underlying theme here is just to keep slow and steady every day, every kind of, every opportunity progress on these action items, so that over the five years' time and beyond, we'll start to see the needle really moving in these areas. So this is the, this is the, an early draft. I wanted you to know we've been working on this since the November meeting. We're getting close to a point that we're ready to sort of turn this, turn into a public-facing report card for us, so that the benchmarks where we are now can be, can be clear, and that as progress is made, you'll see that growth over time. Were there questions at this point from the Board on this?
No, I'd just like to congratulate Brian Delalo for increased student and community engagement through practices and programming. He did that all at once with one little tweet that...
Yeah, yeah. Great point. Okay. So then, hearing no questions, we'll continue to provide updates on this, obviously, when we get that baseline data ready, and then as changes are made on a maybe quarterly basis, we'll be able to give the Board some progress reports on how these things are moving. Coming up in our February meeting, just so the Board's keeping their radar on these big items, of course, we'll have the Hays Group and SiteLogic back to show you the progress on the IMS renovations design. We'll also have some opportunity at Board's request to have the Principals of Governor and Leadership renewed again, and the Board will be able to sign off on that. And a representative or a team from the Social Studies Department will be here to talk about their curriculum review and a new course that they have to propose to the Board as a high school elective. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Next on the addenda is public comments. Within-person Board meetings are zooming. Bethel Park School District has changed its public comments procedure. All individuals wishing to participate in an open board meeting are requested to register their intent with the Board Secretary at least one day in advance of the meeting. Requests to participate shall include the name and address of the participant, the topic to be addressed, and a group affiliation if applicable. Public comments will be accepted at the committee and regular meetings. To comment during a public meeting of the Bethel Park School Board, Board of School Directors, you can call 412-851-6911, or attend to make your comment in person. Each commenter is required to state their name and home address and a brief description of their comment. Please be reminded the public comments at the beginning of each meeting are reserved for the agenda items only at this time. The Board limits each public comment to two minutes. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Seeing no public comments, we'll move it on to business items. Up first is the consent agenda. Or do I need a motion to approve? I need a motion to approve business items for tonight. I need a second?
Second.
Go move, this is Barry.
Okay. Moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Mr. McCoslin?
Just doing all in favor for that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Up first is the consent agenda.
That's what you just did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to make sure there's nobody that has any questions or comments on the consent agenda. There are 19 items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, Mr. McCoslin, can you open that for a vote, please?
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
Motion carries.
Up next is the Curriculum Committee, and Mr. Scalzo.
Okay, under Curriculum Committee, we have two items. Number one is Professional Development. The Board of School Directors approves the Administration's recommendation to permit Dan Sloan and Laura Graham to attend the Pennsylvania State Athletic Director Conference in the Hershey Lodge, Hershey, PA, from March 15 to the 18th, 2022, at a cost of $2,165.44. I would like to move Item One, Professional Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mr. Modrek. Discussion?
Motion carries.
Number two, I'd like to put a motion to amend Agenda Item Two, under Curriculum, to state, "The Board of School Directors approves the Administration's recommendation to approve the High School Course Selection Guide for the 2022-2023 school year, excluding any courses that have not previously been reviewed and approved by the Board."
I need a second. Motion by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Ms. Hoppe. Seeing none, Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries.
I would like to put a motion forward to approve the High School Course Selection Guide for the 2022-2023 school year, excluding any courses that have not previously been reviewed and approved by the Board.
I need a second. Second. Move by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Ms. Hoppe. I'm sorry, guys, it's not on my agenda. So it, Mr. McCoslin, do we need to refresh, or...
I am typing the motions in as we go. I'll have to retype them as per what they were read, but...
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I know we had asked for the change, but did that?
Yeah. It's not allowing me to paste in what he was reading, but I will, I'll get it corrected in the official minutes.
Okay. Any discussion on...
Voting is open on that second motion.
Anything further, Mr. Scalzo?
No, that's all we have.
Motion carried.
Up next is the Personnel Committee, and Mr. McGregor.
Okay, there are four items on the agenda tonight. One, approval of extra-duty responsibility program, 21-22 school year. Number two, approval of staffing changes. Number three, change of assignment. Number four, appointment of personnel. Would anybody like any of these to be held out, discussed?
Can we get some clarification? The approval of staffing change is also going with Number Four, correct, Mr. Puccinari, which is the appointment of personnel?
It is not. So kind of go over the approval of staffing changes and the appointment of personnel. First, I'll take the staffing changes. It is the HSN position. Right now, we have a floater HSN. So myself, Dr., or Mr. Mensch, Dr. Jansani, and Eileen Wallace, the nurse facilitator, came together and tried to figure out how we can utilize staff to the point where we're not, getting to the point where there's not a lot of vacancies. And what we're going to do is, we have a floater HSN, but we're going to open up this permanent position at NAMS, because there is not a permanent HSN at NAMS. So when we move that person to NAMS, that then solidifies utilizing staff appropriately, because with the floater position, she would always have to sub in and out, and she'd be all over the district. So this kind of utilizes staff better. So that's why we did that. The Number Four, Appointment of Personnel, that is for the retirement. That you will be voting, that you already voted on with the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Puccinari.
Yes, any other questions? Mr. Mensch, did I answer that correctly?
So I have one question for, for appointment of personnel, Mr. Puccinari and Mr. Minch, either one. We're adding another part-time special ed pair. I take it's based on a need?
And, no, that was, that's an open position.
That's an open?
Yeah, that position has been open pretty much all year, so we're able to finally fill it.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you. If there's no other conversation, I move items one through four.
I need a second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Any other comments? Voting, please, Mr. McCoslin.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Modrak.
Sure, at this time, we have one item. Approval to perform an asbestos hazardous assessment at IMS as part of the Phase II renovation project, cost not to exceed $10,850. I'd like to move that forward.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Modrak, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Discussion or open for Mr. McCoslin?
Just a quick question on the contract for that. It says not to exceed, just some of the language in that contract allowed for testing of over 250 samples, which would allow us to exceed that amount. There's also another piece, just in regards to any remediation that would be performed. I'm assuming there would be an additional vote if we exceeded this amount, is that correct?
The remediation part or just the 250 samples?
250 samples or the remediation part. I know the remediation said to be determined, but the samples, as it was listed, did say that, you know, it would just be $10 more if it exceeded 250.
Yeah, and obviously, that would happen because, you know, Mr. Fierce would be there with him to authorize if there were additional samples necessary.
And I think that's more so just a coverage on there. They're actually not anticipating going above 250 samples.
Right, I didn't think there would be, but just, you know, for all intents and purposes.
I think they just had to put it in there to kind of protect themselves.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions? Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Gresbeck?
We have two items tonight under Finance Committee. The first item, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve payment to J. Stewart Excavating for a total of $45,944.55 for services rendered for the Bethel Park High School excavation project. This will be paid from the ESRS II grant. And then the second item, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to purchase uniforms for district custodians, head custodians, maintenance, and bus mechanics from UniFirst at a cost not to exceed $15,250. Does anyone have any questions on either of those items? Hearing none, I move to approve both items one and two on the Finance Committee agenda.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gresbeck, seconded by Mr. McGregor. Any other questions before we open up for voting? Seeing none, Mr. McCoslin? Mrs. Janasek, can you take the policy committees tonight? It's just, should be a revision.
Motion carried, ma'am.
Under Policy Committee?
Yes.
We have a revision to the policy, the second of three readings, for policy number Does anyone have questions or conversation on that?
No, I think this is just cleanup.
And I don't think we have to do anything else because we need a third reading, right?
Correct. Thank you very much. Mr. Puccinari, do we have any public comments? If you have a public comment, you can call 412-851-6911.
No public comments.
Well, wait a minute here, do we have any board comments?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate the Discipline Committee report and a lot of the things that you provided in that email that Dr. J sent us. I'm looking forward to hearing more recommendations from your group.
I wanted to say that I went to the January 10th presentation that Special Services had about executive functioning for families and how to support students in that, and I have to say that that presentation was absolutely amazing. The folks from the IU were really great, and the families thoroughly enjoyed it, and we had a lot of good conversation, and everybody learned a lot. I'm assuming that the slides for that are on the website somewhere, or they could contact Special Services if someone missed it. So I would encourage parents to continue looking for those workshops and attend when you can, it's great information. Thank you very much for putting it on and facilitating it.
Now, Mrs. Janasek, was that presentation filmed, or was there any handouts?
It was not recorded because of the room that it was in, but there are slides and handouts available through Special Services.
Can we ask the, whoever has those, to go ahead and email the board, those have presentation?
I think Mr. Minch can take care of that. Thank you, Mr. Minch.
I have one. At the council, at the municipal council meeting last night, it was great. So there were several of us that worked with Mr. Oaks and Mr. Consamagno for the betterment of students in the community, putting a school crossing guard at Corral and Schultz and King School Road, and working to make sure that buses can get in and out of William Penn. So thank you very much for, Dr. Walsh, for initiating that with Mr. Oaks and Mr. Consamagno. Thank you very much, too, for the school crossing guard. We really appreciate it, and it's great to work with the municipal board to make sure that kids in the community stay safe. Do we have any calls in?
No public calls.
Seeing none, Mr. Christiansen, do you have anything else to add tonight?
No, I just wanted to thank you for running the meeting while I'm traveling, so you did a very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.